Good evening and welcome back. It's our continuation of our November first special session. And up first today, we have a public hearing for the cable franchise agreement with Comcast.
So Scott is going to be the reader here. So if you would raise your right hand and do you solemnly swear and affirm or affirm under the penalties of perjury that the responses given and statements made will be the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
This is a public hearing to discuss a proposed franchise agreement with Comcast and accept and hear public comment on the provisions of the agreement. The public hearing notice was advertised in the Herald Mail on October seventeenth and October eighteenth, 2022. Certificate, the certificate of publication is entered as exhibit one into the record.
All right. There's no one signed up to speak? Do you guys have any questions? Cable franchise agreement? There's no one signed up to speak?
I just want to thank Bob Dushin and Dick Nielsen, who are online here. Thank them for everything they've done with this agreement. And it will be introduced here shortly and will be voted on for approval at our regular session on the twenty-second. And thank Tom Robinson, too. He's on vacation at a boondoggle somewhere in the middle of the ocean. And thank him for everything he's done.
We will do so. Thank you, Scott.
Well.
Thank you. So I guess that will conclude the public hearing since no one is here to speak for or against him. We will move into the introduction of the ordinance approving the cable television franchise agreement with Comcast.
Madam Mayor, here I move to introduce an ordinance authorizing the approval of a non-exclusive franchise agreement with Comcast of California, Maryland, Pennsylvania, Virginia, West Virginia LLC. As indicated in the attached agreement, the term of the franchise will be from November twenty-second, 2022 to November twenty-first, 2027, with a provision for one automatic extension of an additional five-year term.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries three to zero. All right. City Administrator comments?
I just have one. I want to thank everybody for all city staff that worked over the weekend for the Halloween block party and the Mummer's Parade. I thought it was a fantastic weekend. Tons of people downtown. It was great to see again and certainly great to get to have the Mummer's Parade back in full swing and look forward to doing it again next year. That's it for me.
Councilmember Martinez.
So I just want to say the ninety-fifth Mummer's Parade riding on the fire truck was amazing. Had a really great time. It was great to see community out. I think that sometimes we all get caught up in what goes wrong instead of just enjoying being out amongst each other. And downtown was safe because we were all outside together, loving our community. And then also, thank you for the people that came from West Virginia and Virginia Beach and Pittsburgh to downtown Hagerstown on Sunday for the black box, open mic, spit your piece. So we had four people that traveled a little distance, so that was awesome. And then special thanks to Washington County Commission of Women for the TEDx Hagerstown Women was a new era dreamers-doers and encouragers, and it was awesome. And I don't know if you guys remember Eden that presented the buckets. She was one of the speakers and she did a really, really, really good talk, and it was called Bright. And her being a college student, she was extremely nervous, but she inspired us all. So that was awesome to see one of our own out there, young person doing a TED Talk with us. Oh, and another thing, congratulations to the primed and polished portfolio middle schoolers. We finished up our eight-week class at the Museum of Fine Arts, and they actually got to go before some reviewers, and one of them was Mr. Youngblood. And they were extremely, extremely nervous. It was seven middle schoolers, and they were shaking in the classroom. But then, once they got out there with the panel of artists, they relaxed and really got to hear some good feedback about their art. So congratulations to them. That's it.
Councilmember O'Shaughnessy?
Not to get on a soapbox here, but if you haven't noticed, it is election time. And, you know, in the early two thousands, I thought that the era of reality television would be sort of the lowest point of social decorum of our society. And then along came social media platforms and said, sort of, hold my beer and watch how much worse I can be. Some of the stuff that's been posted in the last few days, even just on local races, I mean, it's very easy to sit behind a computer and demonize and dehumanize people that putting their names on a ballot, that are, you know, dads and moms and husbands and wives and have children and, you know, just are attempting to commit themselves to improving the lives of their community. I just, you know, I had so much more, I think, that I wanted to say about it, but to give those folks credence, I think, is probably not worthy of the things that they're putting out there. And so just want to thank the candidates for, you know, putting their names forward, taking that step in an era of politics that has become increasingly divisive and demonstratively more aggressive. It is certainly, in most cases, never for the money. And so, you know, I just think about the things you'd want to convey to your kids when you think about the things that you convey anonymously on these social media platforms that just dehumanizes or attempts to dehumanize folks that are just people.
I don't think I could have said that any better. Councilmember Burnett?
I just want to say that I had such a great time at the Halloween block party also. Everyone's costumes were so amazing. I need to step it up next year. Like, they were really, really good. And also, we did the Cupid's Shuffle in the street, like, as a community. That was pretty cool to do. And of course, Mummer's Parade riding the engine. That was fun. And also, at a time where, you know, on Kristen's point about, you know, social media, at a time where we was getting a lot of mean comments on social media, actually seeing people at Mummer's Parade while we're going through and waving and hearing people shout like really nice things about this administration was was good to hear because, you know, we are human and, you know, some things are that are said on social media is aggressive and a bit mean-hearted, but there are still those out there that thanks to work we're doing. It's not easy work. It's hard work. H-E-A-R-T. Hard work. And I was just glad to see that. Thank you.
Yeah. I agree about the Halloween block party. I mean, what an incredible night downtown Hagerstown. And I'm fairly certain Bob Bruchey doing the Cupid's Shuffle in downtown was the only time anyone's ever seen Bob dance, so you guys are welcome for that. But it was, it was, it was just awesome. Got to help judge the costume contest, and there were so many kids in awesome, awesome contest, or costumes. And they were so happy and having so much fun and dancing and getting candy, and everywhere was out of candy by the first hour because so many people showed up. So a great job to everyone who put on that event. And then the Mummer's Parade, it's always, always a good time. And you're right here, it was nice to see people smiling and happy, especially after last week because I couldn't have said what Kristen just said any better. I'd planned to say something very similar. And I know there's been accusations made all week about how we get emotional and stuff. And it's like, you know, we got bit at and bit at and bit at and bit at and bit at last week over called names, you know, threatened, all kinds of stuff. And then when we bite back, it's unprofessional, it's this, it's that. And it's like, okay, we're also human. Like, and we wouldn't have signed up if we didn't have a backbone and do this, but at the same time, when your fourteen-year-old daughter is going, did you see the screenshot? They're calling you this, 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 and this. It's hard not to be emotional. So it is what it is. But we do appreciate all of the support that we got over the weekend, and thank you to the Alsatia Club for putting on that parade again.
And just for the record, to clear the air, the paper plate is not real.
And just for the record, to clear the air, the paper plate is not real.
And just for the record, to clear the air, the paper plate is not real. The paper plate is not real.
The paper plate is not real.
The paper plate is not real.
It was our logo.
It was our logo.
It was our logo.
They photoshopped it as a joke.
They photoshopped it as a joke.
They photoshopped it as a joke.
So to the people who took it literal and thought that we literally copyright infringed
So to the people who took it literal and thought that we literally copyright infringed
So to the people who took it literal and thought that we literally copyright infringed
on a paper plate, we did not.
on a paper plate, we did not.
on a paper plate, we did not.
So with that, I hope to see everyone out and about this weekend.
So with that, I hope to see everyone out and about this weekend.
So with that, I hope to see everyone out and about this weekend.
Let's keep the momentum of visiting downtown going because it was a really, really awesome
Let's keep the momentum of visiting downtown going because it was a really, really awesome
Let's keep the momentum of visiting downtown going because it was a really, really awesome
weekend.
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 We're adjourned.
We're adjourned.
We're adjourned.
See you next week.
See you next week.
See you next week.
Other folks around looking for the alligator. Other folks around looking for the alligator. Other folks around looking for the alligator.
That was really good, Kristen. That was really good, Kristen. That was really good, Kristen. I'd like to be. I'd like to be. I'd like to be.
Yeah, that was. Yeah, that was. Yeah, that was.
My word. My word. My word.
Hello and welcome to Council Wrap. Hello and welcome to Council Wrap.
Hello and welcome to Council Wrap. I'm Wes Decker, joined by City Administrator Scott Nice Warner. And man, I know there are a lot of people in Hagerstown and in Washington County who thought it would probably never happen, or that it wouldn't happen the way that it is happening. And what I'm referring to is cable franchise agreement with Comcast. Give me some of your feelings on that as city administrator and as a resident of Hagerstown, first and foremost, if you would.
Well, I mean, it's something I've worked with ever since I've been here at the city. And that's been 20 years now. The, you know, just the fact that it's not unusual for there to be, when it comes to cable television, having a single incumbent within a, within an area. And that's what Antietam Cable Television, now Antietam Broadband, has been for a long, long, long time.
Fifty-six years.
Fifty-six years. You would know. And, and so to have, especially in this day and age of streaming services, when, when the mayor and I received the correspondence from Comcast wanting to talk about cable television here, I initially was pretty skeptical because, as I've said all along, the initial investment to basically overbuild infrastructure such as cabling, mainly cabling, within a, within a particular market area is expensive. And it would have taken a Comcast, Time Warner, somebody of the larger realm to be able to do something like this. And, and that's, and that's what, what is happening.
Yeah. As, as an employee of Antietam for 26 years, I can't tell you how many times I heard that there was a possibility that Comcast was buying Antietam. So to me, I thought if it ever happened, that's the way it would happen.
Yeah.
But not this way.
Yeah.
And as you said, it doesn't seem to be the business model for Comcast anywhere else.
No, this is actually, from what we understand, and I'm sure that, you know, if anyone from Comcast will watch this, they can certainly correct us. But we believe this is the first entry into a, an incumbent market that they've done at least east of the Mississippi. They've had it happen to them. Verizon is one that, that has done it to them on several occasions. But it, it's, it, it's just, you know, it was, it was certainly a surprise.
Yeah.
To hear that this was, that this was the, the, the way they wanted to go.
And it will dispel that myth that Antietam is a monopoly in Washington County and in Hagerstown specifically.
And we said that for decades.
Right.
That there was no impediment. The only impediment to a, to a competitor at Antietam Cable, or Antietam Broadband, I'm sorry, into this market was the ability to invest in the infrastructure.
Yep.
And as I said earlier, it was going to take one of the big ones to come in and do it. And that's, and that's what's happened.
Yeah. I talked to three members of the public relations team from Comcast today, and they, they said the same thing. They said, you know, yeah, there, there was never anything preventing us from coming in. It's just that it's cost prohibitive. So for some reason, at this point, they've decided that it is the right move to make. And I think for them, and I even said to them, you know, competition is supposed to make everyone better. So they are not afraid of that at all.
Yeah.
At, at the moment, though, they just don't necessarily have a timetable because they have a lot of work to do to get that infrastructure in place.
That's correct. And, and one other, you know, real, real important thing to make clear is that this is a cable franchise agreement. It is federal law that you cannot include internet service or telephone service in this agreement. So we already have competitors in the, in the internet. Point Broadband is here. And I think you've seen Antietam responding to that. And, and, you know, and, and I'll just, you know, I'll just say, to be completely frank on this, I'm an Antietam Cable subscriber, cable television, internet, and I live in Hagerstown. Sure, there have been some issues with Antietam. They're going to happen to everybody.
Yeah.
There is not anyone, there's not any company, Comcast, anyone, that's going to be immune to, to glitches. Also, it's going to have to be very well understood that Comcast, nor Comcast, just set their price. They have to go, and, and you know this as well, you can correct me if I'm wrong, you've been in the, you've been on that side, that the, the price is driven by what the carrier, or what the individual stations.
The networks, yep.
Or networks are going to charge to be able to carry their signal on, on that particular cable service.
Yeah. And, and the problem is, the bigger they get, then the more they feel like they're owed per subscriber. And you see something like in ESPN where they start adding network after network after network, and then they try to dictate where they fall on the channel lineup, too. So they feel like they have a lot of leverage.
Right. And, and they, they certainly do.
Yeah. Because without them, you don't have a product.
You don't have a product. And I think also, when it comes to streaming services, that just adds another complexity to the whole thing.
Right.
In that now, what, what you're seeing happening is, is that content is only being streamed, or it's being streamed a month before it's on, it's on the cable service.
Yep.
So I guess that was another kind of, of, you know, thought that we had as to, you know, why, why the cable side getting so much attention when everything seems to be going to the streaming side? So it's, it's going to be interesting to see how it plays out. It's going to be very, it's, I, I think it's a great opportunity for folks within the corporate boundaries of Hagerstown. And again, I'm going to stress, this is only within the corporate boundaries of Hagerstown. So if you're in halfway, if you're in Fountainhead, if you're in Brightwood Acres, if you're in, geez, out Sierfoss, you're not getting access to Comcast.
Yeah.
It will only be if you are within the corporate boundaries of Hagerstown.
I think it says something about the potential that Comcast sees in the Hagerstown market, whatever that might be. And they are playing that a little close to the vest, I would say.
Sure.
But what, what, what does the city stand to get from this agreement?
We will get certainly through franchise fees. We'll get some, we'll get some revenue through it. We'll also get an additional way to broadcast public education and government programming.
An HD channel.
And, and, and HD as well.
Yeah.
So we'll get that. But again, when you see the, the revenue from cable franchise decreasing as more people move towards streaming, the revenue source is really not the main motivator in doing this. I think it's more of the amenity to the citizen that we're going to have, and the ability to have an additional cable television opportunity for them to look at and compare between Antietam. And I'm sure Antietam will, 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 will step up to the plate. They have in, in times, in, in, in other times. They, one, one other thing I'll mention is that when it comes to this franchise agreement, the key to it is that it, it needs to be equitable or more stringent on the Comcast side than what Antietam ca, than what we have with Antietam Cable.
Yeah.
Because Antietam is the incumbent. And we worked very, very hard to make sure that, that, that this agreement that we have now was, was absolutely equitable in what Antietam is, is under on their franchise agreements. So Antietam's been a great partner here in the city for 56 years.
Yes.
They are a very strong community member.
They are.
And I think they've provided a very, very good service to the community.
And will continue.
And will continue to do that.
Yeah.
And, and I, I am hopeful that Comcast can, can at least be as good as what Antietam has to this community.
Yeah. Be very interesting to see.
Yes.
Yeah. Well, well, thanks for your time on that. We're, we're actually doing a, a two for one.
Doing a two for. You got, I'm, I'm just the warm up for, for waste, for waste management discussion.
Yeah. You're, you're literally warming the seat.
There you go.
For City Engineer Rodney Tissue. We'll bring Rodney over. We'll do, we'll do a changing of the seats here.
All right.
And bring Rodney in for something that I, I think probably, well, certainly affects those who live in the city more than the franchise agreement, depending upon whether those individuals decide to endeavor or delve into cable television. But when it comes to trash collection, something that's always a hot topic, Rodney. You know, people have complaints about it. I, I think when it, when it's done well, you don't hear anything. Nobody's really giving any kudos to those who do the job. So I, I think it's always difficult to negotiate that contract. You get the contract with the service provider, which happens to be a waste management. As you said during the council meeting, this is the final year of that contract. So waste management was before mayor and council to make a request. But as was made clear in the meeting, it's not something that the council needed to grant. Can you sort of sort that out a little bit for taxpayers and give them an idea of exactly what that request was and how that approach came to be? I, I'm guessing it was just waste management saying, hey, we, it doesn't hurt for us to ask for this. So I'll let you take it from here.
Okay. Well, it's, at the root of all this, it's increased costs that they're facing, like everybody's facing. Specifically, labor, also some fuel, but also the processing of recyclables. So when we recycle a plastic bottle and we put it in a blue tote, excuse me, waste management hauls that out to Apple Valley's recycling processing plant on Hopewell Road. There, it's a very mechanized system. There's also laborers standing there, literally sorting the trash, taking out things like dirty diapers and letting the plastic bottles and the paper go through. The cost of doing that with the way labor is right now has just gone up dramatically. So when waste management came in tonight, what their request was, is that they, collection of trash, collection of yard waste, they would, they were asking for a 6% increase, which is high by historical standards, but it's probably reasonable, given how much the Consumer Price Index has moved. But they were asking for a 50% increase in the recyclables processing because of the reason I just stated.
Yeah.
So by contract, we can just increase that by the CPI, and they'll just have to live with it. But I think the mayor and council felt that there should be some special consideration given to them, given the environment and given the whole recycling market. What I heard from the council is that they felt recycling is important. They feel like it's, as they say, do the right thing. And they wanted to continue that, and they wanted to continue collecting it once a week. That was another option, was we could get it once every other week. And I would say in the future, that's probably going to happen, like in 2024 and beyond. But for right now, it's going to stay once a week. And that was basically the outcome.
Is there a big issue with people mixing trash into their recyclables? Is, is that, do you know any type of statistics or any issues with that?
I don't have statistics in front of me, but yes, it's a problem. We take totes away from properties every day, where they put trash in it. We tag it and say, you can't put food waste, diapers, like other things that, you know, are obviously trash that are not recyclable. You can't do that. We tag them. They, if they ignore it, eventually we just say, look, we're just going to take the tote away, the blue recycling tote.
Yeah.
And then they just basically set everything out in their trash. Because when they put all that, what we call contamination in that recycling, that just increases costs at the processing plant for the recyclables. So those people that were grabbing all this stuff out, there's just more and more stuff that they pull out that actually goes into a landfill. And then the good recyclables continue on. But yeah, contamination is a problem.
Yeah.
And certain, I don't know, it seems to come and go. But when people, all you really got to do is look at the lid of the blue tote, and it says on there exactly what can go in there. Nothing else should go in there.
It does. I, I get confused a little bit, though, because I see things like, you know, with a, with a pizza box.
Yep.
I mean, my understanding is that if it has grease or cheese or something on it, you're not supposed to put it in with the recyclables.
If it's got a significant amount of grease on it, you shouldn't put it in.
Okay. See, see, that's one of those things where there's a little bit of a gray area.
A little bit of judgment, right?
I get that, but I'm certainly not putting dirty diapers in my tote.
Right. And, you know, there is certainly, if we have to pull out a greasy pizza box, that's one thing. But when people just basically are putting all their trash in there, then, you know, that's the problem. And that's why costs are going up.
Yeah. Well, yeah. Because again, like you said, I mean, ultimately, it's the cost of labor, which is always the biggest cost that any business has.
Especially right now.
Yeah, exactly. So then the other thing that was brought up was downtown and Zone F in particular, and a way to collect trash downtown that would be more cost effective, I suppose, because then you would be using more of a mechanized device. It would be more automated. Can you explain that a little bit?
Yeah. I think in the bigger picture, going back to labor issues, in the bigger picture, all trash collection is going to be mechanized in the very near future.
Okay.
So what we heard waste management say tonight was, if our contract was put out there for bid right now, the way it is where they would need, where there's trash bags sitting on the sidewalk and a human has to go up, pick them up and throw them in a truck, they wouldn't bid on it because they can't find those laborers. So what they're saying is, we need to go to a mechanized situation, which is basically issuing everyone a tote. And the truck comes down the street, grabs the tote, dumps it, and it's all mechanized. In the downtown, where you have a lot of parked cars and other streets in the city where there's parked cars, there probably still is a laborer moving those totes to where the arm can come and grab it. But it really cuts down on the amount of labor you need. It cuts down on the amount of back injuries and things like that. The, you know, these employees suffer in all kinds of weather dumping these heavy totes. So it's definitely moving in that direction, like all of life is moving in a more of a mechanized, and trash is no different.
Yeah. So we're talking about an $8 increase per quarter.
Yes.
My question to you is, and, and this, this may not be applicable at all, but I'll just throw it out there, because I remember a time when with the recyclables and the tote.
Yep.
There was a, a program, a bonus program, where the more you recycled, you had a chance to earn points.
Yeah.
And you could get items.
Recycle bank.
And, yeah. And I know all of that has changed now, but is there a way, because it seemed to me that those totes had to be weighed in some way to know how much was in there? Would there be any way to bill people based on the amount that they truly put out for waste management to pick up, whether it's recyclables, trash, whatever? Or is, or is that just getting ridiculous about it?
I think, I think it probably is administratively just, I don't know, over the top. What you're talking about is the recycle bank program where there was a chip in the handle. The chip's still in there.
Okay, okay.
And we would come up to your house, we would dump it, and what would be recorded is that you recycled one time.
All right.
And then if you recycled one time, you earned so many points that you could use to buy things.
Okay.
It was a neat program when recycling was hot, and we were literally getting paid as a community for the amount of recycling that we put out.
Yeah.
It is completely flipped over now, where we're paying people to take recyclables, process them. And so the recycle bank went the way of the dough.
Yeah. I just wondered about that because there are many things where, where people are billed for the amount that they use in, in many cases. But it's, it's easier to monitor, obviously. But for me, just, you know, I, I put out my, my trash and/or recycling once every like six weeks because I don't generate a whole lot, and I wait until my bin is full or whatever it might be. So for me, thinking, okay, $8 a quarter is not necessarily going to break me. But at the same time, I'm not using this to the extent that many people are, this particular service.
And a lot of people don't recycle. A lot of people don't use yardways, but they're still paying the fee because of the density of the city and the ability for one truck to drive down the street and collect everyone. That keeps the price down. If you go outside the city limits on the typical residential street, there'll be three, four, five different trash providers coming down the street, which is insanely inefficient. And that's why they're paying $140 a quarter versus our residents, which are paying 50. It's that simple.
Hey, I've never complained about the convenience of it, one bit. I mean, I've lived in the, the city for 28 years and paid for it for 28 years. I've never had a problem with it. I don't necessarily have a problem with this because I know it's always there for me when I need it. Whether I'm using it every week or not, it's there.
Right.
And, yeah. So, you know, I, I have no issue with that. And I love the yard waste pickup, especially back when I had a big pine tree in the backyard because I was filling up bag after bag and putting those out there.
This time of year, it's really.
Yeah. And, and they rarely ever miss them. And I, I thought, man, that's, that's pretty good because the yard waste, to me, would be the one that, that could be missed very easily.
Yeah. It's so random.
Yeah. But it'll be interesting to see ultimately, I guess, what the decision is. But certainly the, the council tonight, you know, gave the nod to saying, hey, let's go ahead and.
It's definitely going to be an increase, which I think we're faced with that. And they also gave the nod to putting totes in the downtown, at least initially as a pilot, to see how that goes with automation. And the interesting thing about that is that if you're in the downtown area, then you can't put a trash bag on the sidewalk and it won't get collected. It's only what's in the tote. So that's going to put a lot of pressure on our code enforcement people.
Yeah.
And a lot of education needs to happen. And, yeah.
Yeah.
It's going to be a struggle.
It, it is. Because to, to that, I say, as, as I walk down the street today at lunchtime to get something to eat, and I see a discarded TV on the sidewalk.
Right.
I'm thinking to myself, as we're having this discussion at the council meeting, okay, now you can't put trash bags on the sidewalk or won't be able to during this period of time? What happens with that? I mean, when people put them out there, then they're just going to sit there and they're eventually going to be.
I think over time, we'll get to where we want to be. But initially, they're just going to sit it there. And it's like, it'll go away eventually. That's what they think.
Boy, oh, boy.
So, yeah, it's, we got our work to do. We're going to have to roll over sleeves. Code enforcement's going to have to be helpful with this. But I think in the end, it's going to make for a better looking city.
Yeah. Well, that, that's the idea. I'm going to definitely take teamwork and a lot of buy-in from everyone to make it happen. But, yeah, very interesting, you know, like I said, with this contract, it was in place for one more year and for the ask to come in. And then I, I think, you know, I, I think Waste Management said, you know, we're asking a good faith. And I think that's the way the council sort of approached.
Yes.
Their feedback to that particular request. So.
That's right.
And, yeah, time will tell just how seamless this goes in the end. But, yeah, that's, that seems to be the indication, you know, in terms of where we're headed on this. Well, thanks for your time, Rodney. Appreciate you sticking around for this. And thanks to all of you for watching and look forward to seeing you next time on Council Wrap. From now, that is a wrap.